Okay, so now that everybody's ready. So, the Faulkirk County School Board meeting is called to order. First, I want to let everybody know that Mr. Rankin's having some problems with the sound system this evening, so if everybody would please just speak up, I think that will solve the problem. At this time, Mr. Bland, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will. Will you? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Darnar, if you would, please take the roll and so record, and at this time...
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second, that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. And at this time, Ms. Kotov is going to present the year-end report for Aspirations 2015.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, school board members. Dr. Lewis, it's my privilege to present to you the year-end report for year two of Aspirations 2015, our strategic plan. As you know, Aspirations 2015 was built off our beliefs and mission statement and focuses in seven strategic areas: academics, character, environment, staffing, communication, resources, and environmental responsibility. For year two, thirty-five action plans from these areas were championed. Of those, sixteen are still, were still ongoing from year one, and nineteen new ones were added. The report that you received provides a brief update on the activities and accomplishments of each of these action plans. I wanted to highlight and provide a little information on just a couple of them. The first one is Action Plan 1.1, encourage, promote, and recognize high academic expectations and achievements for all learners. This action plan was championed by Eileen Burgwin and Ray Rector. Even though this action plan is still ongoing, the accomplishments to date include: a link to each school's honor roll has been posted on the Faulkirk County Public School homepage. To date, the school honor rolls are in the top ten of our webpage hits. There's a superintendent's list similar to a dean's list with recognition for all As at the end of each semester that's posted. Spelling Bee trophy has been engraved with the division champions' names and is currently on display at Warrington Middle School along with the banner recognizing the achievement of the division champ. Banners for team winners of the Division Twenty-Four Game Math Tournament are awarded at each year's contest and are displayed at the winning schools. The Faulkirk County Public School AP Honor Roll was printed by the Faulkirk Democrat to recognize the achievements of students enrolled in advanced placement courses who received qualifying scores on one or more AP exam. Plaques honoring AP students earning threes, fours, and fives were presented to each high school principal to be displayed at the high school. SAT preparation program offered at a reduced rate to all Faulkirk County Public School students. A marketing subcommittee is, in the beginning stages of work, the committee will enlist the aid of high school marketing departments to promote high academic expectations for all students. The goal is to make it cool to be smart. An academic integrity subcommittee has been formed to facilitate the development of division-wide honor code, and an online survey was developed and sent out to all secondary teachers and administrators in order to ascertain their perceptions of a need for a division-wide policy addressing academic integrity. This one started in year one, and it's ongoing to year three, and just so much has been accomplished from this one strategic plan, I wanted to highlight that one. Another one is Action Plan 4.18, improve current teacher mentoring program to support new employees with transitioning into the teacher profession, their school, and the Faulkirk County community. This action plan was championed by Kim Rains, and this strategic plan is complete. A steering committee was created and reviewed our current work with new teachers. The responsibilities and expectations were defined for all involved personnel: mentoring supervisor, principals, human resources, division lead mentor facilitator, lead mentors, mentors, and new teachers. Mentoring programs include teachers meeting at the new teacher orientation for lunch with their mentor teacher. The, they attend after-school workshops on classroom management and first-year responsibilities, and then they work with instructional coaches who are mostly retired administrators or teachers. The actions underway include the development of a mentor handbook, building connections with community supports, and discussion boards and links for new teachers and mentors. The last action plan I'd like to highlight is an action plan that actually, the strategic planning portion took place in year one, but the implementation took place this year, year two. From, from Action Plan 4.20, create staff recognition to celebrate accomplishment of employees throughout the year. From this one, we got the tree awards. And so I thought it was interesting, not just to highlight an ongoing plan or one that was completed within a year, but one that was completed and then you could see how it then comes to fruition. So, at your eleventh, June 11th meeting, you honor the top two in each of the five classes of our classified awards. As of the end of year two, fifty-four action plans out of a hundred and thirty-two have been championed. Of those fifty-four, thirty-two are complete, three have been incorporated into other action plans, and nineteen will be ongoing into year three. So, you have your report. If you have any questions or want any additional detail, please let us know, and we'll have status reports that we can provide to you.
A lot of success, successes.
It really was. And so that's why I picked it, because it dealt with students and teachers, I mean, the whole gamut, classified employees, and we've done a lot, so it is my privilege to present this.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we move to announcements. The July Finance Committee will meet near the end of July on a date to be announced. The Personnel Committee will meet July 12th at 8:00 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. The Building Committee will meet Thursday, July 12th at 9:00 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. Chairman's night will be Monday, July 23rd at 5:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a school board work session Monday, July 23rd at 6:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. The Personnel Committee will meet Thursday, August 9th at 8:00 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. The Building Committee will meet Thursday, August 9th at 9:00 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room, and the next school board meeting is Monday, August 13th at 7:00 p.m. here at the Warren Green Building. At this time, Dr. Lewis, do you have just a brief response to last month's citizens' time?
I do. There were quite a few people who were out to speak at the meeting at Kettle Run High School at, in June, and at, in the, at the beginning of that meeting, Ms. Grove announced that I would be meeting with local clubs and organizations to begin to develop a memorandum of understanding so middle school competitive sports could be picked up by local clubs and organizations. Since that time, I've had the opportunity to meet with members of four local organizations to discuss the possibility of entering into an agreement so that the middle school competitive sports program could continue to be run in the community through existing clubs. This week, I'm planning to meet with members of the Warrington Youth Sports Club, the Faulkirk County Soccer Club, the Faulkirk Girls Softball Association, and Faulkirk Youth Football, thank you, to begin, possibly finalize, a memorandum of understanding. It's our hope that within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to publicly announce exactly how these programs will be run. Each of the organizations has a slightly different way. They plan to implement a middle school sports league, but it will be leagues run in a similar fashion to how they've been run in the past in our middle schools. Not identically, but in a similar fashion. And we'll, hopefully, over the next two to three weeks, we'll have much more specific information for the public, so people will understand how the, the programs will work. I'm going to speak about this in a little bit more detail, a little bit later on in the program this evening, but I did want to mention that because I know a number of people plan on speaking about sports this evening, I anticipate that. I wanted to make sure that that information was out before a public comment.
Thank you. At, at this time, we move to citizens' time. The school board appreciates public input, however, due to time constraints, citizens' time is not a time for dialogue. Please limit your comments to three minutes tonight. We do have the little fancy lights, so when you've got the yellow light, you've got thirty seconds left, and red light, it's, fuck, finish it up. These matters relating to personal or personnel issues should not be discussed. The school board welcomes the public's comments and believes community involvement is an important component, component of a successful school division. When I call your name, if you would, please come to podium, state your name and your magisterial district, and we will start with Michelle, I don't want to butcher it...
Matika.
Hello, my name is Michelle Matika, and I believe I'm in the Scott District. Thank you to the board and to the administration for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm an educator and been in education for over eighteen years, but I'm a parent, and tonight I come to you as a parent. After someone said to me that not enough parents speak out about education in this county, I decided to come and speak. I speak on my behalf of my husband as well, who cannot be here tonight. Our son attends schools in Faulkirk County. People, practices, community, relationships. Our son was a gift to us nine years ago. He started running at eight months, talking at eight months, but until he came to Faulkirk County Public Schools, he couldn't read past a kindergarten level. We knew something was wrong. Our son hated school, not to the fault of any educator, but the areas we were in, the budget, the resources, the training, the support, was not there for the educators. Faulkirk County Public Schools has a little bit more than the basics, but the dedicated staff has continued to help the children with less and less, and what has happened in other districts is not far from happening here unless the parents, community, keep the standards high, and provide resources for all students to keep up with the best divisions at all costs. As our children, our future are at risk. At risk of being in a kindergarten class where my son started with twenty-five-plus students, a part-time assistant, unqualified substitutes, not enough, he had needs, not enough to be noticed, except that when he was always out of his seat. But when you have twenty-five students and know how, what can a teacher do? "Mommy, why do kids have to sit all day?" he asked me in kindergarten. What else can a teacher do with twenty-five students? People, practices, community, relationships. Later, we were told that our son was the most hyperactive child a teacher ever saw. When asked, does he need more help? She said, no, he's not the worst in the class of my thirty. That was in first grade. At risk, we are at risk of a first grader finding a razor blade on his school grounds because the custodial staff was not adequate for the size of the grounds. At risk of not being noticed except when he did something wrong, as there was not enough staff to focus on interventions. People, practices, community, relationships. At risk, at becoming a dropout. Any child's at risk. Those with special needs, those who are gifted, I've seen it happen. At risk for becoming a dropout, as differentiated instruction, vocational and alternative options are not available. Meaningful relationships with adults at school achieve greater than those who do not, students who have that, and that's why I keep saying those words, and I'm just going to skip to the last paragraph because that time goes by quick. To that, we say thank you to our son's school, the community, the custodial staff, the cafeteria, the office, the instructional assistants, the teachers, the counselors, the administration, the volunteers, and the community, and everyone that has helped our son here in Faulkirk County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Followed by Mia Grabner.
Chairman Grove, my name is Mia Grabner, and I am grateful to be represented by Brian Gorg in the Center District, but I am saddened by the lack of respect certain school board members have given its constituents. You can now come out from behind the curtain because your excuse that it is a philosophy to cut the competitive sports program is bogus. You are allowing a third party to take over and run it in your schools. I believe you just didn't want the liability or headache, and that's a poor excuse. I can only imagine that when arts or music become a headache, you will cut those too. You could have simply doubled the activity fees and gate fees for middle school sports and kept the programs in addition to intramural programs, and kept it budget neutral, but now you've gone to a third party, allowing such high fees almost triple the original cost, and with less playing time, that you will ensure the success of intramural programs by pricing people out of the competitive program. And then you can say, see, people want an intramural, not competitive. As a school board, you are responsible for answering to the public, and I just want you to know that it doesn't end with sports. To start with, I think a state audit of your budget is in order. Thank you.
Michael Pickett.
Michael Pickett, Scott District. According to Webster's Dictionary, the word bully means using superior strength or influence to intimidate somebody, typically forcing him or her to do what one wants. It amazes me that as a county, we're running anti-bullying campaigns, but the school board's using this power to bully its constituents. You're forcing us to do what you want us to do, simply ignoring the voices of those who've elected you into your positions. December fifteenth, 2015 cannot get here fast enough for me. Time and again, you've heard from parents and kids begging and pleading you to maintain competitive sports in this county. You've been offered ample opportunity and funding to reinstate the programs, yet time and again, you deny our kids the opportunity to participate in these programs by going forward because you think you know what's best for our kids. Not once have I heard a constituent stand at these meetings and say they support this decision in its current state. Every day, I call on the experiences I've learned as an athlete through, in athletic competition, using that to serve as a guidebook in my life. The values of sportsmanship and teamwork, sacrifice, commitment, hard work, discipline, spirit, and competitiveness have served me well. Research by the National Center for Educational Statistics showed that high school athletes not only are more likely to graduate, they're more likely to earn bachelor degrees, achieve full-time employment than non-athletes, as well as maintain physically active in, into their adult lives. A reason some school boards are expanding athletics instead of contracting them. How about offering a wider array of sports for our middle schools, like baseball or track? I don't think ping pong after school in a PE-type atmosphere is going to help prepare student athletes for the future. You worry about them not making team and being hurt. I was cut from my middle school baseball team, but I've gone on to, I went on to excel at football. I stayed involved in baseball by being an umpire and coach, and have influenced hundreds of kids over the years, teaching them to win with humility and accept defeat, with, to win with humility and accept defeat with dignity, but never, ever to give up. My oldest son, being cut from Kettle Run's high school baseball team this year, went on to a new opportunity. He lettered twice in track this, this year, as a freshman. My youngest son was one of two kids, and I've said this before, who went from Hunter Ritchie to Warren to Middle School, and threw up for months in anticipation of this. He didn't know anybody there. Football was his outlet, making the team, being part of the team and the school, wearing his jersey at the pep rallies. It helped him be involved in his school, immediately helped him make friends. My kids can't sing, they can't play an instrument, yet they are athletes. What happens when they can't make, when they get cut from the school play? Are you going to eliminate drama? You say there's opportunity in sports and rec leaves, now we're going to pay $200 this fall for him to play. How many families can do that at this time? You ask us to try it for three years, why not implement your intramural programs alongside athletics? In three years, I'm willing to bet that athletic programs are still going to be more popular. In closing, I'm going to offer this quote from General Douglas MacArthur, he gave this to his athletes at West Point. "Upon the fields of friendly strife are sown the seeds which, on other days and on other fields, are going to bear the fruits of victory."
Tammy Rogers.
Tammy Rogers, Lee District. I was, more, better, okay. That doesn't count against me, right? At the last meeting on June 11th, I asked the board three questions. I followed up with an email asking the same three questions and suggested alternatives. To date, I am yet to receive any answers regarding the proposed calendar change, so I am here again to ask my questions and hope you will provide answers. First, what are the costs associated with starting the school year early, and how is it going to be paid? What will be cut from the budget to accommodate these additional costs? There's a substantial amount of maintenance done at the schools and the bus fleet over the summer. How is this maintenance going to get done during a shortened summer vacation, or is it? In addition, teachers and other staff will be back in school a week earlier than usual. A week during the hottest month of the year is going to require additional air conditioning resulting in higher cost. How will these costs be absorbed? Secondly, what are the alternatives? What else has the board reviewed? The school website states a number of other school divisions follow this calendar model. I ask you, what other divisions? When I suggested the board talk to Culpeper County, you scoffed. It seems logical to me that you would consult a neighboring county who appears to be making the same calendar work. Third, how is it our county goes back to school two weeks before surrounding counties, but we essentially get out at the same time? What are they doing that we aren't? You also stated on the website that we'll, by going back to school a week early, we could, we could result in getting out a week early. There's no reason why our children can't get out a week earlier under the existing calendar. There's enough fluff in the current calendar that we're, that could be cut and still meet the required hours. I have gone through and done some research on the, the block schedules and the purpose and, and what the, you know, the, the pros and cons and, and all, and I just feel that if I've gone and done that research and have come up with some alternatives, that you as the board should be doing the same thing and presenting that data to us, and I'm hoping tonight, Dr. Lewis, that you are going to do that, because this is a big issue. This is our family time that you're messing with. Thank you.
Karen. When comments go to the calendar comments, are you responding or no?
We're just, right now, we're just gathering.
We're just gathering comments, okay. Because I was, I saw that email, but I assumed that Karen was sending.
I understand.
All right, and I would, want to remind everybody, please to refrain from the applause, just like we would not allow you to sit here and boo a speaker. We are, do not want you to applaud either. We want everybody to feel comfortable to come to the podium and to speak their mind for their three minutes. So, if you would, please refrain from any further applause. Melanie Birch is next.
Good evening. I'm also speaking for Lee Walters from the Scott District, and you know, I'm from Scott District. He couldn't be here tonight, so my first, six questions are from him. What percentage of administrative healthcare premiums are paid by the taxpayers? What percentage do the administrators pay towards their retirement into the Virginia system? And what percentage do the taxpayers pay on their behalf? In a time of supposedly unworkable budgets, how is the school system able to come up with 2.84 million in bonuses, as was stated in the paper? Did the school board approve the budgets, and which members voted for it? When was the last independent audit of the school district? And these are now my questions, actually. What is the status of using more citizens to help the school board come up with better utilization of the budget as proposed in the June work session? What is the status of allowing more town hall meetings so that we can have better interaction with the school board, rather than more citizens' times at these meetings with strange time limits? What do you propose to offer the citizens who feel that either they, there may be a consequence towards their children if they speak in front of you, or that citizens who do speak feel that the constant perception is that you don't listen? Can you propose more transparency with the budget process via posting citizens' questions online with your answers below the questions? This is the same process used by Loudon and Fairfax to reduce the number of questions on the same subject. In lieu of everything that has happened this year, will you offer to work more with the Board of Supervisors to make sure everyone is reading, interpreting, and interpreting the facts correctly? Basically, allowing everybody to work on the same page. Considering the FY 2013 budget is still not final, will you please add summary statements to the budget to add better transparency? Several portions of the budget show spending with no budgeted amount. A proposal was brought to the board by Mr. Gorg to have an audit from Richmond to allow them to view our schools and budget, to see where we may save and/or improve. The public is for this option. We view this as an opportunity to find areas to improve that perhaps are staring us in the face, but because everyone has looked at the budget or physically looked at the school so many times, we simply do not see the obvious. Again, we view this as a positive for the county, and we are formally requesting this. Please respond. And lastly, how do you recommend to improve our relation, or your relations, excuse me, with the Board of Supervisors? And I can turn this in, I just need to...
Helene, is it Helen or Helen?
Helena.
Helena, that's an A, okay. Bert.
School lunches, I have to say, are not the healthiest, really. I mean, they say Jell-O with whipped cream on the top and sherbet are fruits, and you can get them as fruits instead of an apple or banana or something else. I know my mom wouldn't let me get it. I don't really think I should get it anyway, so... Oh, yeah, people who are allergic to milk, they still have to get string cheese with their PB and J. You're not allowed to get that separate or anything. You have to get it, that's all.
Thank you. Very good. Denise Schaefer.
Hi, my name is Denise Schaefer. I'm from the Scott District. There is a growing number of Faulkirk residents that are not happy with the status quo of the school board. We elected you to represent us, and you are not listening to your constituents. If you are not going to listen to us, you might as well close your school board email accounts and cancel citizens' time during these school board meetings. Otherwise, what's the point? Why are we here? Over eight hundred to nine hundred Faulkirk residents have told you they want these school-run programs to stay, and you're not listening. While I appreciate the local club's willingness to take over these programs, they will be more expensive, fewer times a week, and at different times, a very different program. Also, many in this county do not agree with this inclusiveness you are trying to instill in our children. Faulkirk County Schools should be challenging its students to excel, not fostering mediocracy, whether it comes to academics, sports, band, orchestra, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, is it Hoyle?
Oh.
Teresa Robey?
Hi, my name, good evening. My name is Teresa Robey, and I'm from the Cedar Rowan District. I'm here to speak out against the Faulkirk County Schools' proposed 2013-14 calendar. I have two sons in Faulkirk County Schools, and I'm very discouraged to hear that this board is considering voting on such an, an issue that affects so many people's lives without considering all the options. I am not just talking about the family vacations, this board seems to belittle this issue too. I'm talking about the students, the parents, the businesses, the recsports, the community as a whole. I have to say, I'm very disappointed in this board and this so-called leadership group, what you, than the jobs you have done. You have not looked into all the alternatives, and I would have hoped the whole calendar would have been reviewed by this group and looked at ways to shorten our school year, not extend it. I am a finance, excuse me, I hate public speaking. I'm a finance manager at Fairfax County Water, and it is best practice to talk to other jurisdictions to see what our peers are doing. It is obvious this has not been done. I have looked at the website, and it says that many other school divisions are considering, are using this model. Well, I have checked with all the surrounding, Fairfax, Loudon, Culpeper, Prince William, they don't use this. They use an A-B schedule, not a four-by-four, which solves the problem of the winter, the winter break issue. I would like to remind this board that large number of the parents in this community are working parents, and the numerous days off during the school year can be a burden and hardship for many. I also want to remind them that a lot, the large number of the parents are government workers, and August is recess time. Those parents get to spend time with their families. Now you're just going to stick their kids back in class, and those parents can actually take off. I find that very disgraceful, this board has not looked at other options. If this board and the leadership group were truly in touch with the people that they represent, they would know that the parents and the teachers of this community are not in favor of the school starting early and finishing early. We want our children to enjoy the summer months, and we do not want them there at the hottest part of the year. I would ask this board to not even con- I would ask this board to not even consider this calendar model for vote and fall, but to delay the issue until true due diligence can be done and this board and the community can give it options to consider. Thank you.
Edward Rodemsky.
You've heard many times over the several months, also tonight, members continue to come and talk about the middle school sports program. There's a reason why this issue is not going away, despite the efforts of the clubs, despite the efforts of people that are going on. It's because the people aren't satisfied with the answers that they've been given. When they pressed for the issue, they've been denied a process to speak their mind. They've also, because of ideological rigidness, have not had the opportunity to explore many viable options. It's a belief of the community that actually both programs can exist side by side, with or without funding. So we've been told that it's a funding issue until we address the funding issue. Then we're told it's a philosophical issue. Until we address the philosophical issue, then it's back to a funding issue. And so this is why people aren't satisfied with the proposals that have been put forth. And this is why they feel they're not being listened to. This is why they feel they're not being heard, because people truly want what's best for the kids. And there are many, many viable alternatives available that aren't being explored. And it appears that a predetermined position is being implemented, and we're backdoor implementing it without, and this is why the clubs have stepped forward, thank goodness, because without it, there'd be no option. There would be no option. And so they're taking what they can get to try to preserve something. And so I believe that the board should reconsider and allow middle school sports, competitive sports, which does service 25% of your middle school population. It does not have to be put as an exception in order to accomplish the intramural program. It's, I think it's the position of this community that both programs have merit and both programs have a place. But they also accomplish different objectives, and they can be done in concert with one another. And they don't have to be put where one is done at the expense of the other. Because maximum participation, if that's the objective, shows that both programs should be done, and both programs should be done with a high priority. So we have to kind of understand what is the real objective here of the decision. A decision that was made and now is being forced on the community. So this is why people are now continuing to voice their opinion. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Scott Keithley.
Good evening. My name is Scott Keithley. I'm in the Marshall District. I have three kids in Fauquier County school system. My concern is, it echoes what I'm hearing all evening here. My concern is the lack of consideration and communication with the public, mainly from our superintendent, but also other, our board members here. Earlier this year, we heard that the budget issues to fund middle school and freshman sports, you know, were the main concern. Then last meeting, it becomes clear that it is being dropped for equality, or, you know, we want all kids to be able to participate in sports and not to, you know, include everybody, exclude anybody. So there's some contradiction on what's being brought forward, then it becomes something else, which I don't, you know, I don't appreciate that. You know, just be forthright and truthful with us, and we'll decide. We know we're being told that, and then another concern, I feel like we're getting another wave of someone's agenda forced upon us here. You know, then I hear we're not being told in 2013 year or 14 year, our kids will be going back to school earlier, first part of August or a week earlier. I haven't heard the explanation, and really don't need to hear the explanation. What has been working for years with sports in our calendar school year has served our families well and really doesn't need to be corrected or considered. That's our time with our families. That doesn't need to be your time. I would expect that your employees and yourselves would want to spend time with yours as well. You know, the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." So with the sports considered and our kids' time, summertime, that's a valuable time for us to regroup, refresh ourselves, and be ready to learn when to come back. Board is going to try to impose this upon our families. Quite honestly, you're losing my trust, and I feel we are getting half-trues from you. You seem to be out of touch with those that you're supposed to be serving, which is us. So I would really appreciate if you guys would listen to the public, not disregard them, not have your agenda already set forth in motion before we hear these things. You know, I rarely come to these meetings, but I keep shaking my head, you know, with, and these are just the superficial things. The sports in the county year are major issues, but I'm wondering what's going on underneath all this that we're not aware of. So I find myself missing dinner with my family to come and participate in these meetings because I'm wondering truly what is going on here. Where are we heading? And I appreciate everything you guys do, but I am concerned. Thank you.
Natalie Keedley.
My name is Natalie Keedley, and I'm in the Marshall District. And I kind of wrote this out, and it's kind of the same thing that I've said, I think, four times now, along with everything that everybody else has said four or five times now, and you don't want to listen. So I could read it all again, but it's really all the same thing, and they've said it already. Sports are important. Middle school sports, competitive sports are important for all the reasons that have been said, I don't know, hundreds of times now, and you're not listening. You're not listening to your constituents. You're not listening to the kids, and it's very frustrating that there's no reason, it's not a money issue. .01, 04% is nothing in our budget. And I don't know. As far as, you know, like multiple people have said, and I don't know these people, they're saying the same thing that I'm saying. This kind of seems like common sense that maybe you guys are missing. I don't know. And I know you're all very smart people, and I'm not trying to demean you, but I'm saying, why aren't you listening to the people that are talking here? Everybody's talking passionately about this, and you're not listening. So I'm going away from my little thing here, but I feel like no decision is final unless we're dead. All of us are dead. And you can make a decision to revise things and make it right for our community, for our children, and I really appreciate the people that are looking at me, because some of you aren't even looking at me, and it's very frustrating, and I'm very passionate about this. If you're really looking at me, then why are you here? And look at everybody here that's telling you this stuff, and you're not listening. I don't understand. It's very frustrating. You're elected officials for everyone here that's telling you over and over, like my husband said, "We're not home with our kids for dinner. We work hard every day." And we're putting it in your hands to make good decisions for our schools, for our teachers, for our band, for our extracurricular things. These things are all important. Education is very important. It's at the top. But athletics are huge, and the competitive athletics are huge, and they are huge in the middle school level. You can't just start when you get in 10th grade. You can't do it. You have to be competitive from the start, from the start. And I'm looking at all of you, and I see some of your faces are feeling what I'm saying, but, I mean, just please listen to people here. That's all I'm asking, is that you really consider revising what you're doing and going back. Just because you made a decision, your comment was, "We've already decided on that before anybody's citizens' time last week." That's wrong! That's wrong! And this is my time! I'm going to clap for me! Please listen! Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Block.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Josh Block, Cedar Run. A very passionately by both Mr. and Mrs. Keithley. Madam Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to expend five seconds for the citizens of the county that have taken the time to come here to applaud for themselves, to applaud their neighbors, to applaud themselves for being here. I feel it's never too late to say we were wrong. It's never too late to say, you know what, as the superintendent of this district, I'm not sure I made the right choice. I hear you, folks. I think we can find another way to do this. Let's really work on this together as a collection of citizens as well as you are. You know, we're all citizens in the same county, you know? So let's figure out a way to work together and get this done. I think a lot of the concerns that people have, and I know I do personally, is where does this lead when it comes to teacher evaluations? Is there going to be a decision globally made that this is the way we make those decisions? This is how we evaluate, and we're not going to worry about the competitiveness so much. We're going to evaluate in the way we want to evaluate. My evaluation is, you know, my four kids that are in school now come home, you know, with two to follow shortly thereafter. I'll have six kids all at the same time in your district, in your schools. And so I have a lot invested in this. And I plead with you to, you know, to really look at what we're saying. Mr. and Mrs. Keithley made, you know, very passionate pleas. Mr. Keithley mentioned communication. It's all about communicating with us. You know, we're making the effort to do that with you as a board now. We all just want that in return. The global level of competitiveness within the county is a lot of what we see as parents. We see our kids being taken away from that competitive spirit. We see that, that lack of competitiveness being moved towards a group standard or a group effort, or we don't see it as my son, my daughter can excel in this, and they can be recognized by excelling in that. I think it's wonderful that we have the ability to do that with our education, and it can go to the degree of making a kid of success in school or failure. And I hope you guys will reconsider. I really do. Thank you.
Kimberly Huggins.
I actually am going to say again what several people have already said here. I just want to hit a couple of points here. The last meeting, Ms. Wolf mentioned that you truly feel that the program we're going to implement is for the best of all students. And you had mentioned earlier that one in four kids in our school system play competitive sports. How is it best for those 25% kids, getting rid of what we have now, which wasn't broken? And I'm going to speak to football, because my kids play everything, but they really love football, okay? What happens to the children whose parents can't afford $125 for football? Now, you can say we can have a scholarship. I can tell you right now, if we couldn't afford for my kid $125 to play football, I would not go and ask for help, and there'll be plenty of people who won't, okay? What happens to the kids that could stay after school for their sports practice, but now they have no way to get there because practice is going to be at 5:00? And the kid that lives on the west side, all the way down in South County of Beelton that goes to Taylor, there's no way he can get back up here for practice. It's not going to happen. In regards to the cuts that have been discussed or have been at issue over the last few months, if your issue is budget, as it was originally presented to the public, you have been presented with several options to cover the costs associated with these programs because the public wants to keep these programs in the school system. If your issue is philosophy, has been stated by Dr. Lewis and since supported by several school board members, then we, as a community, reject it. We do not want to be a Petri dish experiment for your new philosophy. We don't want it. I have talked with many teachers, coaches, and parents, and not one of them wants to get rid of competitive sports and replace it with this. Nobody here has come forward and said, "Get rid of competitive sports. We want this intramural program." There's plenty of people who say, "Do both," and we're for that 100%. Listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Steve Potacek.
Hey, baby, how's it going? You all right? I'm Steve, I'm Steve Potacek from the Marshall District. This week, the school system will be signing agreements with local sports clubs to take over the middle school competitive sports program. While these agreements limit the school's liability and legal responsibility, they do not relieve the school system or leave more responsibility to our student athletes. In our meetings to have the clubs take over, we have discussed but not implemented any standards all the clubs will adhere to. Without these guidelines, these programs will be substandard in the eyes of myself, parents, and teachers. Here's what I believe the standards to be. Grades, and this is probably the biggest one for me. All club middle school programs must have and must adhere to the current grade eligibility requirements that our middle school currently has. And this kind of ties into your, I was listening to the Aspirations 2015. I mean, that ties right into it. I mean, that ties into it right there. Behavior. All club middle school programs must contain strong guidelines pertaining to in-school, out-of-school behavior. Individuals who have conduct detrimental would have playing time reduced or eliminated. Physicals. All athletes must be required to have a current sports physical. In this journey that I've been kind of involved in this kind of stuff, Dr. Ruston has told me that he has caught kids with serious health problems because they had to have a sports physical. It's a must. We've got to have that. Coaches. All coaches and assistants must have background tests and be trained and certified in the various sports they'll be coaching. Now, I know a family in my travels that these standards would really help. This individual could not try out for the middle school basketball program last year because of his grades, and the light kind of went, ah, I can't play unless I excel. I can't do it. And finally, you know, I mean, his mother expressed the frustration, you know, she's been working on it, I'm working on it. He finally realized, I can't play this sport that I love for my school unless I do this. And that's the hook. And the problem is, if we take away the stick and hand out the carrot, guess what? The bundy rat is going to take it and run, okay? Without these basic standards implemented, I fear we're going to cripple our young student athletes. And if we don't prepare them for what they're going to move on to, it's going to be disastrous for them. I hope you will carefully consider making sure that these basic standards are part of the middle school club comprehensive sports program agreements. It's really, and, I mean, you know, I don't like it any more than anybody else does, but it, you know, I think you reach a point where you gotta, you gotta go along with it and try and make it work. But I'm going to tell you, if these things aren't put in, you are not going to like me, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Move to board reports.
I'm sorry, Donna. I'm sorry. There are a couple of people that came in late. We can slap their hands for coming in late, but I know they want to speak. Is that possible?
After teacher interim, you brought me this? Yeah.
My name's Richard Reese, and I'm in the Marshall District. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I've been listening tonight, and I have some prepared remarks, but I'm going to go off the cuff a little bit and say that the backlash that you, that you're getting from virtually the entire community on this subject of the middle school sports is apparently, to me, warranted, fair, reasonable, and justified. And I think you ought to think about that, because I think what's happened here is you're getting a backlash for two reasons. You're getting a backlash because people don't like the decision that you made, but when you subvert the process, and that's when you really get yourselves in trouble. So what happens, I think, in a lot of people's view here is there's this big budget battle, and there's all this smoke, and during that budget battle, school sports are eliminated. But it turns out that the money is not the issue. Turns out there's a philosophy behind it that you want middle school sports eliminated. So if you want middle school sports eliminated, that, and it's not, and it's not a necessity by virtue of the budget because you've been offered the money, why do it now? Why not do it last year? Why not do it next year? You have time, and you have the ability to let the discourse run the proper course, run its proper course, so that people can have all of the input that they need, because what you're hearing is that you're basically cramming down a personal, private agenda unnecessarily down the public's throat. And when you start doing that... And when you start doing that, and when you start taking advantage of your position rather than letting the people really run the show, then you get yourselves in trouble. And I think that's what's happening here, and I think that's, I think this is the beginning of something that you guys probably don't want. So I would suggest, really, you know, that you really do reconsider. People are saying it very nicely. You know, reconsider. Gandhi said, "When you make a mistake, take immediate steps to correct it." You've got the opportunity. If you shortcut this process and cram it down, what month is this now, July? And we still haven't reached any kind of agreements? I've been sitting in these meetings with Superintendent Lewis, and I can see that this is a midnight show that we're trying to put together and slap together middle school sports in the last second, completely unnecessarily. You don't have to do it this way. You have all the time in the world to have the interaction that the people are asking you for. Give it to them, and see what happens. You might not get your way, but maybe you will. Bring your best arguments forward. People don't even know what they are. So I think this is done under the smokescreen of the budget, and I think it's going to backfire on you. So I, you know, I just ask that you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we move to board member reports. Ms. Rurin, I'll start. Kyle, Abby, or a member of the board.
Don, you go. Mr. Ford.
Again, I echo what some of these people say, but I also know the time is of the essence in what we're looking at to keep competitive sports going and the program that's been proposed, and I look forward to hearing Dr. Lewis's report back to us as soon as possible. I also want to say that, continue to say, I'm hearing a lot of things from people in the community about the calendar. There's a group in the center district who are getting together to just sort of talk it out, a group of parents, and, and I think that's a pretty good idea. And I'm excited about participating in that. I've had people email me from vacation in Africa when they found out about this, and say, "Please don't do it." I mean, I do get a lot of response, so I'd like us to continue to consider what the impact on our community is going to be about this. Lastly, this is a slightly new subject. I did have a conversation with a, a local official about the opportunity for us to hold meetings here in the school, because we don't focus a lot on school security, and what we would have to do to hold meetings about security issues in the schools. Do they apply to sunshine laws or not? Meaning, can we hold a committee meeting that's not open because of sensitive security issues, physical security issues of our schools? So...
The answer is yes.
We can, okay. So I, I think it's something that we may want to look at. It's not on the radar of anybody, it's not a hot topic, but I do want to make sure that at least maybe from the point of view of the school board, we do get at some point a report on what we're doing about physical security policy.
Personally, I think that would be something that we would have to discuss without our attorney, as far as, as holding the open meetings like that.
Okay. Mr. Land.
Madam Chair, I would like to share with you and all the others some great and exciting news about the Mountain Vista graduating class this year. This year, 59 students graduated from Mountain Vista. 21 were from right here in Faukeer County, Faukeer County Schools.
[inaudible]
And, and listen to where some of these students are going. 42% are going to UVA.
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm coming back with 15% to Tech, Virginia Tech, 14% to William &amp; Mary, 83% are going to schools here in state, and 17 are going out of state. Now, listen to some of the other schools that are out of state here. Georgia Tech, Johns Hopkins, Wesleyly, Emory, Riddle, Wake Forest, Notre Dame, and Cornell. So these folks are, Mountain Vista has done a tremendous job in moving these kids through, and in educating them, and getting them into some great schools, folks. A great success story.
I'll look back at you.
Okay, is that all you got?
That's all.
Okay. I'll just mention a couple of building committee things, because that, those meetings came through late today. The auditorium seats are out at Faukeer.
Correct.
And are the new ones?
Schedule to start installation Monday.
Okay. And the old ones were going to be refurbished and going to Argentina to be used.
Not at school board experience.
Yeah, but not at school board experience. Yes, make that clear. And then, one other thing, you might just get a question on graduate playground, and that's being, in, in the works, right? And it'll be ready by the time school starts.
We're expecting it later in July.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, I have to know, how did we do this with Argentina?
We didn't.
We didn't. We didn't. We had to do it.
Our contractor actually had done this on numerous other, new installations, and it's something made work, and not only for recycling, but to re-purpose.
Oh, that's great.
Seats that could be used elsewhere, so.
That's great.
We weren't aware of that until he actually moved.
Yeah.
All right. One other thing I'll mention is that Duke and I sat in on a liaison committee meeting with board supervisors and had some very good conversation, and they actually brought up a couple of items that you all may have seen in the paper, because we haven't talked about it at all, and that was how to address the bus replacement.
Leasing versus purchasing.
And, excuse me, and also, they, again, brought up, we did not, if possibly, we can find a way to fix that biology wing at Faukeer while we're fixing everything else, or not everything, but while we're renovating. So we talked about it, and it was a good start of a conversation, and we hope that it...
It was a verging meeting.
Yeah, it was, good meeting. Okay, now, Ms. Kotov, financial management report.
You have before you the financial management report as of the end of May. We're 11 months or 92% through the year. Both our revenues and our expenditures are tracking with last year's percent-wise. I will tell you that I will probably present the June financials a couple times, because we continue to pay our bills through August. So you'll get those a couple times. Food nutrition looks good. Sometimes we worry.
Yeah.
And are there any questions?
No, I guess just the health insurance still is a, the health insurance fund is still kind of a...
The health insurance, we, for the, the county manages the health insurance fund, but it is a joint fund. We will dip into our reserves with our expenses. Last month, we had one of our lowest months of the year, and this past month, it has been our highest of the year. So we're tracking over 20% increase in health insurance.
Yeah. Okay. Questions, anybody?
No.
No? All right. Ms. Downs, human resource department.
Good evening. Following is the monthly report from human resources. Currently, we're in high gear recruiting. We have 25 certified vacancies, and we have 37 classified vacancies. I hope by this time next in August, when I come to you, they'll all be filled. In addition, at this time of year, I usually tell you our, how many people have left us. Currently, we've had 78, no, 84 certified positions. Last year, there were 98. So that's a difference of 14, if I did my math correctly. And then, for classified, this year we had 78 levers, and last year was 94, which I believe is a difference of 16. So overall, we've had 30 less people leave at this point, same point time last year. So I will, next month, bring the turnover report. We'll have that in, and all the exit interviews that we have gathered together for a report for you all.
Okay.
I have one question on the report. On the report we received earlier, I'm sorry, I can't see, it was on the previous slide, was it said, Warnton Middle Teacher?
Yes.
It just says teacher.
It is just a teacher. What we're looking for is a middle school teacher, and then Mrs. Banister can put it into the area that she has enrollment, whether it's English, math, or science. So we're going to look for a pool of middle school, and then she's going to interview, and we'll be placing them in that need, the highest need.
Now, I'm going to play Sally Murray.
Oh.
What are we doing about the numbers for the new teacher dinner?
I don't know. I don't know who's in charge of the new teacher dinner. Ms. Murray has stepped down.
Sally Murray starts to ask her that in July.
Well, and she has stepped down, so I called Mr. Eastham, and he was out of the country, so hopefully he'll call me back this year, I mean, this week.
Yeah.
So I can find out about that. But we have been telling people. Yeah, no, it's an excellent question. Thank you.
You know Sally were here, she would be asking that.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board approve the following minutes of the June 11th school board meeting and the June 25th special school board meeting and work session, the payment of bills, personnel actions, the code of student conduct, and the teacher evaluation documents.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board approve the minutes of the June 11th school board meeting and the June 25th special school board meeting and work session, payment of bills, personnel actions, code of student conduct, and teacher evaluation documents. Any discussion? I'll just ask, we got the fully definition switched around, and everybody saw that, and we're comfortable.
And the laser thing is all...
And the laser pointer...
Is removed.
Is removed. Okay.
From the original documents.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries, and we move to information items. Dr. Lewis.
Right. I gave a brief update a few minutes ago. I am meeting with the representatives from Faukeer Youth Football, Faukeer County Soccer Club, Faukeer Girls Softball Association, and Warnton Youth Sports Club this week. Of course, Faukeer Youth Football is interested in starting a middle school football league. Faukeer County Soccer Club would run the soccer program, Faukeer Girls Softball, obviously softball. Warnton Youth Sports Club would pick up basketball and volleyball. Each of these groups would run their program autonomously. In other words, we would not define for them the nature of their program. We do have in the memorandum requirements for them to use the names and mascots of the middle schools. They must adhere, and again, we're, we're still working through this, but they have a draft of the MOU. And that would include the requirement that all adults working with children in any of these organizations would have a thorough background check, that they would have parents sign a document saying that they strongly recommend that every child participating have a physical examination. They would hold the school division harmless and defend the school division against suit relative to actions pertaining to the league. And finally, have parents sign a notice recognizing that this is a private league and not a school board-run program. And so that's the, the scope of the actual MOU. Some of the things that Mr. Potacek brought up in our conversations, things like having an expectation for grades and behavior, we began to discuss the last time we met, we meet again on the 17th. I think that there was some general agreement that it would be a good idea to do that. Trying to figure out how that gets done in terms of reporting, because these are not school division programs, the school division's not in a position to report relative to students' grades and behavior to outside organizations. So I think the, the real concern about whether or not there would be that requirement centered more around how that would be managed logistically than whether or not philosophically it was a sound practice. And so I think...
Right.
Well, I think, I think there are some things that can be done, and that's why I said, I think it's likely that there will be some requirements like that, but that has not fully been, been formed yet about how that'll work. But I'm, I'm meeting individually with those groups this week. We've met as a central group in the past. We're meeting to discuss the MOUs, and then we meet again on the 17th to come back and kind of brainstorm these last issues.
Yeah, everybody.
Everybody.
Okay.
On the 17th.
Dr. Lewis, I'm sorry, Faukeer Football also does the sideline cheer, too.
Right.
You're right. They do sideline cheer. A couple of things I would tell you about the program, and a few speakers did mention that there are some drawbacks. Some of these programs will be very similar to how they've been run in the past. Faukeer County Soccer Club, for instance, that program really will be, I believe, almost identical to how it's been run in the past. The Faukeer Girls Softball Association also, very similar to how it's been run in the past. The girls' basketball program, very similar to how it's been run in the past. The Faukeer Youth Football Program, because they meet at 5:00 in the evening, some of those logistics will be a problem. However, the good side to what they're planning, at least in these early stages, is that they hope to have two teams for each middle school, not a single team, one team for younger middle school students, one team for older middle school students. One concern they've expressed to me is in the past, in the middle school leagues, that they are teams of 50 or so students, but only 20 or 25 typically get to play regularly. By having the two teams, all the students would be guaranteed playing time in every game. I've been very impressed with the commitment that these clubs have to making this work. They're skilled, obviously, they've been doing this for a long time. They bring a lot of insight to the program. Anytime you do something for the first time, there, there are wrinkles to be ironed out. I'm not saying that it will be seamless in every respect, but I think we have an opportunity here, in some respects, to even improve upon the programs that have been run in the past. And in some, in some sense, the programs will require clearly greater cost to parents and greater logistical involvement in, in terms of getting kids to and from programs from time to time. So I'm not saying that it will be the same experience in every sense. But you know, I, we've had parents say to us through this entire process, you know, it's not the cost, it's not the cost, you know? And so I think this evening and other evenings, we've heard other parents say, "Well, it is the cost." Well, the cost is a driving factor. It was an $86,000 budget line item to hold middle school sports. Obviously, those costs have to be picked up. You know, we can, I don't expect clubs can run the program at the minimal cost that parents paid when those programs run at school. So we clearly recognize that there will be a greater cost to parents, and we, and we recognize that logistically, parents will have a greater responsibility in getting students to and from games. So it's not going to be identical. But I do think there's an opportunity to have an outstanding program. I think the people who are going to run the programs are committed to it, committed to making it work. We're committed to working with them, so that the schools will be able to recognize the performance and contribution of children who are playing on these teams. And so I, you know, I'm excited about it. I, you know, I think like whenever you go into a new initiative, you have some reservations, you have to work things out. And as I said, I don't believe it will be seamless. But I'm optimistic that when we get done with this planning over the next two or three weeks, and it'll be the end of July before it will be done, we have a very, I believe, high opportunity for success in year one with participation, high levels of participation. And hopefully, because the, the clubs are talking about having more than one team, not just football, but they talked about that with basketball as well, possibly volleyball, having more than one team from each middle school, so that even more students will have an opportunity to play that have played in the past. So that's, that's where we are now. I will bring a report back to the board on the 23rd of June, and then...
July. July.
July, rather.
Yeah, let's don't go back to June.
After this process is done.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Lewis here?
May I ask you a question? I don't know, you can answer.
No, we don't want to start. We never get past this.
I don't mind answering questions after.
Yeah, but we've got a closed session afterwards. For, if you can catch him for five minutes.
I'll be glad to call him.
Yep. We'll move to the Faukeer Auditorium Sound System Replacement, and Mr. Legacy is going to present this one.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members, and Dr. Lewis. This evening, I bring to you the information item for the sound system replacement as part of the Faukeer High School auditorium renovations, and the request to issue a purchase order to Corbett Technology Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $201,021.64 for the sound system replacement. As we know, the renovations for the auditorium are included in the Phase 2 renovations for the school, and a budget of $617,500 was allocated for the auditorium renovations.
What was that number again?
The largest portion of this renovation is basically asset replacements, meaning new seating, new lighting system for the stage, new sound system are the three major components of that renovation. Just to recap, and I think most of the board members are aware, but the scope for the renovations, again, besides the asset replacement, also includes a complete repainting of the auditorium walls and ceiling. We had abatement of existing vinyl asbestos floor tile that had to come out. And then we also have concrete work associated with the new... with the new seating for ADA accessibility and for some wire management. We actually saw cut the floor to put conduit in to run audio/video cabling for various productions, instead of draping it over the back of the seats and up the wall and up through the window of the control booth. So considering all that, but when we looked at all the disciplines involved and the time constraints with getting all this work done in the summer, this project is a project that we, the staff, are managing. It is not being managed by the general contractor, Whiting Turner, nor was it designed by the architects.
Right.
It is something that we have taken on in-house. The school division has contracted with a acoustics and technology consultant, Polysonics Incorporated, to do the design and the specifications for the new sound system. That process also not only involved school division staff, but Mr. Bob Rankin, who everybody, I believe, here knows was a part of this process, to help identify what we needed, what works in the sound system, what doesn't work. The specifications included equipment types, equipment makes, and quantities. Staff did receive, or did have five companies or five vendors attend the pre-bid mandatory job walk. Three submitted bids, two were non-responsive. The low bid was Corbett Technology Solutions, Inc., again, and their bid was based on the plans per the specifications that designed by, designed by Polysonics. Both other bidders also bid per the plans and specs with no request for substitute equipment or notes regarding quantities. We respectfully request that the school board approve the contract to CTSI in the amount of $201,012.64, but note that staff will assess the bid alternate pricing as identified in the bid tabulation sheets that I think you were provided, items two, two through, I believe, five. Item one under the bid alternate was to remove the existing equipment and wiring. We do not abandon non-functional equipment wiring in place. It's better to get it out of the way when you're putting in brand-new systems. So we would initially issue that to Corbett Technologies. And then we would assess the remaining bid alternates as most of those items are box items, shelf items that we can buy direct and possibly save.
Oh, okay.
And some overhead and handling by the vendors. They're not hard-to-purchase items.
Now, I don't know anything about sound systems, so I ask this only so in a very general way. How does this sound system differ from the one at Kettle Run?
I can't answer that specifically. It has a lot of the same, I guess, components, functionality, features.
Features.
You know, it's, because I don't have the firsthand knowledge with Kettle Run.
So it's similar features?
Similar features, similar components. And we, you know, we got through some, a couple hurdles with Kettle Run initially with some refresher training for the school, because we determined a lot of it was operator knowledge of the system.
Right.
How do we work it?
Exactly.
Exactly. And in fact, refresher training was done last year for the staff at the school. We have found that to be very helpful. I don't want to say this system has been dumbed down. I don't think that's the right term, but I think it is user-friendly. I think Bob Rankin would.
Simplify.
Simplify. Thank you.
Okay.
There you go. And Bob made a point to bring that up, and we had a design discussion, so I think we'll be okay.
That's great.
So, and.
Not sure.
In closing, I would ask that the board take action on this tonight as we are under
Time constraints.
Very, very tight timeline to get this project accomplished.
Gregory Alshar, I believe, had the refurbishment of the stage itself.
The stage floor does. That will be postponed until next summer. We ran out of time, and we really haven't determined the specification to replace that stage floor yet. We know it needs to be done. You're absolutely right. But we just want to make sure we have the right, the right plan, right specification to replace it. And right now, I don't have a rough order.
It's just for the board information, there's, there's some things that people are doing different now than the old traditional oak planks on the stage and, and all of that stuff. So we want to explore and make sure that we're going to be doing the right thing installing the.
Performance floor.
Right.
There you go.
Yeah, can I just ask a question about alternate, the alternate blocks you have here? You say some of those can be bought, commercial grade, can be bought, implemented. So we're going to do an evaluation if we actually need to do those at, if we need to do them. For example, alternate two, hearing assist systems. We currently have one at Falkir now. I think we've had it for about three years. One, I'm not sure how frequently it's been used or has been requested. And two, if we don't need to buy it, and the one we have will last us a few more years, we will certainly not purchase that. I apologize. The base bid includes repurchase of new speakers, sound equipment, wire, and correct?
Correct.
Is there something functionally just wrong about it now? Does it make more sense to do it now during this full renovation than later? This isn't, I want to make sure this is not something that can be put off till a different time.
Well.
I'm just looking at a teacher there. Yeah, I'm just looking at, you know, the cost there. I just want to, this is, this was brought to us, we're putting it on to action tonight. It's a lot of money. I just want to make sure.
We agree.
I understand the full reasoning for that base bid amount.
That base bid amount, the system repairs to the existing components.
Repairs, repair costs.
You know, they've been fairly high over the years. We've had numerous failures of the equipment during productions, be it the sound or the lighting system. And to my knowledge, Mr. Gord, we have done piecemeal the repairs and replacements. I work closely with Mr. Rankin on a frequent basis to try to keep this thing running on a continual basis.
And that, that and the fact that we've had to supplement a lot of the things with additional wiring, additional speakers, and audio pieces of equipment when you have various productions going on. And that, that gets costly as well.
Yeah, I mean, we've reached the tipping point where it's, we feel no longer economically feasible to continue to piecemeal these repairs to keep the system running as opposed to doing a full replacement on it.
Well, we're getting to a point where it's hard to get parts.
Exactly.
Pieces for me to more repeat. So we're patching them with duct tape.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions for Mr. Livacey? No. Thanks. Okay, Ms. Kotov, fines and fee policy.
We've been bringing all our policies during the year. I, one of, the financial policies will be coming up, but this one just came up early because it does deal with our fees. The changes in this policy include a discussion that happened earlier in the year. So it does talk about not waiving parking fees unless the superintendent or his designee, in this case, potentially the high school principals, would approve it. We also are striking the driver's education, which we don't currently charge, and changing some wording to show career.
We don't, we don't.
Right. So that's why we don't charge it.
That's very good.
Then we have some title changes. And then some of the items that have been in our, that we've been charging for, we've been under the auspice of the consumable materials. We just wanted to bring those as a separate item, so they're very clear that it is for like advanced physical education. Now, both this policy and the existing policy both give the superintendent the authority to set the rates, and then if there's any changes in those, he does inform you. So as far as the rate setting, that portion's kind of done because he hasn't informed you, but this is the actual policy. We'd like to go ahead and, and have that approved. So if possible, if you could forward it on tonight. If not, we could go the end of August.
Okay.
Or the end of July.
End of July.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions on this policy?
No, I think.
Do you want me to stay for the next one?
Well, I think I can handle it, but if you stay there, we can take.
Okay.
So we are going to move this to action. Is that correct?
That's.
I'm okay with moving to action.
The next is ensembles. You know, the work session back in June, Marcy and I brought you a list of new stipends that we would like to pay, and these, they really cover three different issues. First, we have increased from $50 to $60 the cost of the activity fee across the board. With the additional revenue, we're, we hope to fund the stipends that are here before you. They, well, that and a combination of one other thing I'll get to in a minute. The weight room, when we cut the funding for the weight room, it was about $76,000 in the budget, and that funding was cut out. It was a huge problem for high school principals who rely on the access to weight room during the year and during the summer months when students prepare for fall sports at a school. And so they felt it was very important that we have a stipend for weight room, even though we couldn't replicate the amount of money we were putting into the weight room program in the past. And so we worked with the high school principals to fashion all of the stipends we're going to talk with you about this evening. What they asked for was a single stipend of $4,000 for each of the schools, so that they could cover their cost of having the weight room open throughout the summer months when they're preparing. This cost was covered through extended contracts of certain employees that were cut during the budget process. This doesn't solve the problem of access to the weight room during the school year, but the principals felt that they could use existing stipends that they have to modify, which they have the right to do, to create stipends in each of the three seasons to have the weight room open during the year. And so I want to make sure you understood that this $4,000 stipend is really covering part of the cost annually of having the weight room open, and the other costs are going to be absorbed through principals using existing stipends in their complement now. The ensemble stipend is $2,600. That is per high school. It's about half of what they've received in the past. But what they hope to do is look from year to year and see which ensembles we'll make, because from year to year, different students have different interests. One year, they may have a flute group, another year, a brass quintet. So they want the flexibility to take this $2,600 worth of stipends and divide it among different groups that, on an annual basis. So principals will have to do their panforms in the fall each year to let us know how they're going to divide that stipend. Might be for jazz band, might be for pet band, might be for wind ensemble, and, excuse me, not wind ensemble, but like brass quintet. But at the end of the day, each of the three schools has $2,600. Now, one question I want to answer, too, because it came up as a function of this. Now that we will be charging a $60 activity fee for students who participate in ensembles, a student who pays the ensemble fee will be eligible, eligible to participate in any of the ensembles. You don't pay $60 for each of the ensembles.
In multiple.
Right. In other words, you could be both in the jazz band and in the brass quintet, but you have to pay that $60 fee.
Wouldn't be one time?
You would pay it one time for the year, and you could be on, in any ensemble.
Right. In other ones, in other ones.
That's separate. Marching band, marching band is a separate $60 fee.
Right.
And it kind of makes sense, because in other ones, you pay per season, and most of these are held at the same time. So it is kind of like a season, although some do run most of the year.
And the last stipends, the series you have are for what in the past have been unfunded coaching positions. I'm going to do a, just a brief walkthrough history. About 10 to 12 years ago, perhaps a little more, parents came to the school board and asked the board to institute lacrosse, swimming, and indoor track. At the time, they said, we will fund these programs, but please institute these sports. The board did that in anticipation that parents would underwrite the cost of those sports. But what we learned from that experience is that that was good for a year or two. But as those students whose parents came and spoke to the board moved through, and parents of new lacrosse players, swimmers, and indoor track runners came before the board and said, why are we paying for this? And the memories grow short at times. And so what happened was, this has been kind of a, a point of contention for years now. When I got here, four, over four years ago, they were still talking about it. So this is, has been almost an annual conversation. What we would like to do, and the principals of the three high schools support this, is gradually move away from this concept of partially funded sports, and ultimately, over the next few years, get lacrosse and swimming and indoor track under the general umbrella so they're like all other sports. We can't do that in one fell swoop. We don't have the money to do that. But what we're proposing is that for the first time next year, we charge the participants of partially funded sports the $60 fee, and use that fee to underwrite the cost of stipends to pay the coaches. We've never paid the coaches before.
And make that very clear.
Right.
That these coaches have not been.
They've never been paid before. They've been volunteered. So these stipends, which would be 1,500 for varsity boys lacrosse, 800 for JV boys lacrosse, 1,500 for girls varsity lacrosse, and 800 for girls JV lacrosse, 800 for indoor track head coach, 400 for indoor track assistant coach, 1,500 for swimming head coach, and 800 for swimming assistant coach. And these are adequate. We would probably want them to grow over time to be more consistent with other sports, but we think it's a good foot-in-the-door proposition. One thing I have to say, it's very important, this will not, the parents of students in these sports will still have some obligation to continue to fund these sports beyond the $60 commitment, because there's still other costs that are being defrayed by the school. And the three principals figure that the schools have about a $45,000 cost now in these sports in terms of equipment and uniforms and things like that. But what we hope to do over the next two, three, four years is transition a little bit each year to where we get parents out of the business of subsidizing these sports and have them totally under the VHSL umbrella like all sports. This is step one. So that's what, and this could all be paid for simply by requiring the parents of these players to pay the same $60 fee that parents of, of other sports are required to pay. Did I do it okay?
You did an excellent job. So in summary.
In summary.
The $10 increase in the activity fee will support the weight room supplements. Having ensemble students pay, the participants pay, will support the ensemble and for the others. That's why the amounts, while they're not where we would have hoped, they're what can support themselves.
Yes.
Now, the other thing that I would say is that the reason the weight room cost is spread among all of these is that all students have access to the weight room, and certainly it affects all athletes and others, so that it seems fair to distribute that weight room cost across all sports.
We would request that this be considered for action tonight as the weight room supplement may start as early as the end of July.
End of July.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we need to start.
Yep. Okay, and do I have?
Motion?
Motion, yes.
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board move information items 11B, C, and D to action items, and 12A, or move to action items 12A, B, and C for consideration for approval this evening.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board move information items 11B, C, and D to action items 12A, B, and C for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the motion carries. And we move to policy restructuring.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms.?
Members of the board, Dr. Lewis. Tonight, we present for your information the restructured policies in the section of Support Services that address the areas of facilities, planning, and maintenance, emergency management and safety, and transportation and school nutrition services. These policies have been posted on the school division's website. Many of the policies are unchanged. Some contain minor changes, and there are a few policies that have some significant changes. To allow time for review of these policies, I am requesting that you add the discussion of these policies at your work session on July 23rd, and we can talk about them in more detail at that time. If you have any questions tonight, I'd be glad to address them. Now, did you?
I still can't open them, but Ginger is going to show me what I'm doing wrong.
Okay.
Even if there's any that you want to sit down and discuss, just let me know or talk on the phone.
I would like to suggest, though, that if we all can, and I am guilty of this myself, is to get our questions in early. And the reason why I say that is because if you ask a question, if I see it early, I can kind of get an idea, because it hasn't worked in the past, because I, I don't understand what you guys are asking, because I haven't seen your questions.
Right.
So if everybody could send your questions to everybody, that would be great. At least we could get ready for, so we could understand. And if we could do it early, and I, again, I want to repeat, I am very guilty of not doing it early myself.
I will tell you that I couldn't open them either.
Oh, really?
But I realize.
Thank you.
That it was user ignorance, not, not a problem.
[laughter]
So, that was, that was me. But.
Are they different?
You have to hit the control key.
I did.
When you, and I wasn't doing that. So in my case, it was that I wasn't following the direction.
What I was having is I didn't see the tabs down at the bottom.
Oh.
I had no tabs down at the bottom, and I always have those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll send them to everybody.
Okay. Okay.
Early.
Early. Yeah. Okay.
Fine.
Okay. Thank you. And?
Dr. Lewis, the calendar.
The, um, the calendar's been a topic of conversation now for, for a couple of months, and we pushed off any decision on the calendar till mid to late fall for that purpose. And I, there are a few, a few speakers this evening mentioned a rush to judgment or a quick decision. I think anything, if anything, I think the board's being very, very cautious, and really does want to consider everyone's opinion. Mrs. Parkinson has been keeping tabs of the information that we've received from, from parents and, and perhaps students over the website. And we'll be collating those, putting them to some sort of order for the board's review. And we'll have sometime later in the summer, a very thorough conversation about both the merits and the liabilities of the calendar. It's interesting, I think, if you look at the calendar, really, the change is a modest one. It's really the change of a week. And yet, that week is an important week to many, many families. So I don't want for a moment to think that we aren't listening to that concern. I think, I think we're going to have to look very, very carefully at the strengths and weaknesses of that calendar. Then the board's going to have to make a decision about the decree to which it's in the best interest of the instructional program and families, whether or not we make that change from what we currently use. So I just, I just wanted to make sure everyone realized that no decision was going to be made on the calendar anytime this summer, and it would be certainly mid-fall at the earliest before it was reconsidered.
Okay. And if they send a question in to the, whatever it is, calendar comments, if it goes strictly back to calendar comments, then it goes to you, but you haven't been responding, you've just been collecting.
Correct.
Okay. So if they're looking for a response, then they need to email the board members, because we're not seeing, unless they send it to us, we're not.
Well, I forwarded. I forwarded. So have I forwarded none to you guys?
Yeah, I forwarded, because I've forwarded.
Okay.
I would, I would make one more comment about the calendar, because I had the opportunity to discuss this calendar with superintendents from Region Four. That's fourteen Northern Virginia school divisions from Alexandria all the way over to Page and Shenandoah. And I think there's a great deal of interest conceptually in the calendar. Under Virginia law, in order to have a calendar like that, you have to meet the criteria for opening before Labor Day. And many of those school divisions don't meet that criteria, those criteria, and wouldn't be able to use the calendar even if they chose.
Right.
They would not allow the care back.
The ones that were mentioned, those would not be.
Many, many, many in our region aren't eligible for the earlier opening. So that it's not, that it wouldn't be found desirable perhaps by others. There are, I believe, sixteen or seventeen school divisions in Virginia that currently use it. And most of those school divisions are in central and south central Virginia. But we'll have, we'll have a lot more opportunity to talk about it before any decisions are made.
Okay.
Well, then, I'll even read all the questions, that maybe what we can do is have a Q and A on the website about it.
Yeah, because no use to. To email me the questions, if Karen's got the answers for, as far as the counties or whatever.
I would like for us to come back to you sometime, maybe in August, with, to begin another discussion, and we'll have all the information at that time.
Okay.
What, in terms of timeframe, is that too, too late or too early for the discussion?
Well, we've asked citizens to make comments up through September on the website, so we can give you.
What you have.
Kind of give you an update or a review, and then in September, maybe a more in-depth discussion.
Okay. Then I'll forward you whatever.
Well, I understand people's frustration, though, when they're emailing and they're not getting any answers.
Oh, I do, too.
It's already been made, and we haven't, and just collecting the information now. There's absolutely no decision at all, or even, we haven't even discussed it in any great length, you know, or any detail.
No.
At this point. So I just don't want people to think that there's some, you know, that we're discussing it, and not letting people know, because that's just not occurring right now. So. Any discussion that's been, that has occurred in the minutes.
Right.
Right. It's been out of the meeting, and it's been really general. Well, it's something that you guys were saying you were implementing in two thousand thirteen. That was what I was originally put out, but that's why I see my people on the matrix.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And I sent an email to this board, who's been mortified to others. So you have the original email that I sent with my questions.
Yes. Yeah, I do. We just don't have the answers.
Well, then.
The answers will come when this discussion takes place, when she gathers.
Well, I went to a work session, and in that work session, it was, you know, that we're going to provide some answers at the next meeting.
Right.
Well, I'm still not seeing any answers. Plus, you were also going to provide the real reason you're doing this, because you seem to be under the impression that we don't understand. So I'm under the impression it's, you know, to align that, that calendar here, so they, the winter break, and when they start fresh, that makes sense, but what else can we do not to alter the entire calendar for every single student?
Okay.
And I've done some research, and the same kind of research that you can do, that it can work under existing calendars.
Well, what I'd like to suggest then is, can we, at our next school board meeting in August, can we be kind of like a little present, please, without answering?
I think that's possible. Sure. Maybe Mrs. Parkinson and I can tag team on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Action items.
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board authorize the issue of a purchase order to Corbett Technology Solutions Incorporated, known as CTSI, in amount of two hundred and one thousand and twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents to replace the sound system in the Falkir High School auditorium.
Second. Hey, I just have a question. Greg, you said two hundred and one thousand, twelve dollars.
Or.
Is it twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. All right. Okay. Just want to make sure, second.
Motion and a second that the school board authorize the issue of a purchase order to Corbett Technology Solutions Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and one thousand and twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents to replace the sound system in Falkir High School Auditorium. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a discussion.
Sorry. My, my discussion point is, we're being asked, we've been presented this very quickly, and been asked to turn this around. I would have preferred to have been able to vote on specifically just the base contract amount, since it seems that alternates one through seven may not need to be done.
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
If, if you want to vote on an amount that's the one fifty-one plus the sixty-seven something, what's that total?
Yes.
The first two items, then that's fine.
I, I'm just saying, that's what I would have been preferred to vote on.
We were going to say up to two hundred and one thousand, so that we could look, and if we decided that we do need to get the wired.
You don't have to come back to us.
We may or may not do it with that, with CTSI, but sometimes when we get a bid for different alternates, we get a better price because they're looking at it in the context of the whole picture.
Right.
So when we go out separately, we may find that it costs a little bit more, but we don't know that. But we want to check all of that before we make the decisions on alternates three through whatever, seven, six, whatever. But we're, we're glad if you're not comfortable, if you want to amend the motion on the floor to just include the first two items, that's fine.
Right.
Do you want to amend?
Yeah, I would like to amend the, the motion to approve the, the school board authorize the issue of purchase order to Corbett Technology Solutions in the amount of whatever the first.
Was it one fifty?
I don't know, Greg, have you got it?
Hold on for a second here.
We're getting. One fifty-five, two forty, one ninety-four.
That's right. Seventy-six.
Plus seventy-six. Yeah, seven-six-fifty plus twenty-one, fifty-four, ninety-six.
And Madam Chair, I would like to recognize the, the amendment to the original motion.
No, I have a question, or?
Go ahead.
I have a question about the amendment.
Yes.
So what does that mean, though? Does that mean you're going to, if you do the alternates, you're going to have to come back?
No, actually, we won't have to come back, because it won't rise to the threshold of needing full school board approval. But we won't issue, we, we may have to go back to the building committee, but we wouldn't have to come back.
It'll come back to us.
Okay, so it's not going to slow down the process at all? Okay.
No. It'll come back, it'll come back to us for discussion and.
In building committee.
And recommendation at that time.
Okay. Marcy, what is it?
Oh, I have one sixty-five, zero forty-seven, if I picked the right numbers.
One sixty-five.
Did you add, oh, did you not add the twenty-one, sixty-four?
No. Oh, no, no, you're not required, I got one sixty-two.
Okay. Greg, what's your number?
Oh, no, no, I added the third thing, I didn't know.
One sixty-two, eight ninety-one.
Yes.
Eight ninety-one, what?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
She didn't even have a calendar.
Is that right? Okay.
All right.
I thought it was mathly in the back.
Do we amend the amendment?
Mrs. Rains?
That was easy mental math, by the way. I just want to point that out.
Twenty-four.
Mental math.
So we're, we're amending the amendment to one sixty-two, eight ninety-one, ninety-four.
We are amending the motion to one sixty-two, eight ninety-one, ninety-four. Okay. Any more discussion?
The motion is, is on the floor now?
No.
Okay. I, I just want to let the board know that this was discussed in, in great detail during the building committee meeting, with input from Bob, and Bob knows this, this system inside, and I believe he's worked with this thing for, I don't, I don't want to tell Bob's age, but Bob's been working.
Long time.
For a long time.
It's the same one I gave when you were there, right?
Same one. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And Donna, Donna was there before me.
I don't think so.
And also with input from, is it polytech grade that we use?
Polysonic.
Polysonic.
And they are a local warranty business.
Yeah, to make sure that we're only replacing what needs to be replaced, and, and that's it. And Bob, you know, checked all that out as well. So we feel comfortable, at least the building committee feels comfortable in bringing this recommendation to the board.
Yeah. And, and I'll just throw in, remember that this is CIP money, it's not operating.
It's not operating.
It's not money.
Money.
Pay teachers.